I don't know if that's his.
I can hear you.
Hi Susan.
Hello.
Andreas, can you hear us? Alan, can you hear?
Yeah, but it's a soft, you know, voice.
How's that?
Better.
So we got, I got Alan. Andreas, can you hear us okay?
Yes, I can.
Very good. Bernadette?
Yes, I can hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna start the meeting then. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Town and Newington Conservation Commission for November eighteenth, twenty twenty five to order. Your recording secretary, please take the roll call.
Yes, Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Bashan.
Here.
Commissioner Conway.
I'm sorry, yes, I'm here.
Commissioner Morris.
Here.
Commissioner Ostrinsky.
Here.
Commissioner Sadeel.
Here.
Commissioner Ellis.
Here.
Commissioner Paskowicz.
Here.
Chairman Zelik.
Here.
Commissioner Womet.
Here.
Very good. We have a full commission this evening. Acceptance of minutes, approval of the minutes from October twenty first, twenty twenty five. Commissioners, anything to amend in the minutes? Any updates? Commissioner Bashat?
Don't really have a change, but um where we, where we started to talk about the last week, it's actually on page two when Chris started talking about your email and the ex parte communication and all that. I made a statement that that was not ex parte communication, and I stand by that. And I think we need to discuss that further and make sure we clear the record of that because that's putting the town in a compromising situation to make that accusation, I think.
Okay, I, I agree with you from what I just read here quickly. But we will save that for another time. We'll ask that that be added as an agenda item possibly. We'll talk about it later in the meeting. Right now, I'm looking for updates to the minutes, the edits that need to be made. Looking at the room, seeing none, anyone online? All right, seeing none. Can I get a motion to accept the minutes?
I make a motion to accept the minutes. Commissioner Conway?
Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Take the second, you're not seated.
I'm not seen.
I need a second, second from Commissioner Anderson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I am gonna abstain. I didn't read the minutes and I was not present at the last meeting. Any other abstentions?
I'm saying just, I wasn't there.
Two abstentions. Commissioner Womet also abstains. Motion passes.
Guy was not there.
All right, we still have four ayes, which is a majority, so the motion passes. We'll move on to item four, public hearing. This is application IW twenty five dash fourteen to amend the Town of Newington inland wetlands and water courses map to construct a single family residence within the Upland Review area at thirty three Laurel Circle in the R twenty zone applicant Rosetti Development LLC owner SJ Fish and Sons Incorporated. Contact Robert Rosetti. If the applicant is present, will they please come forward?
We need admission. Turn the microphone on and state name and address for the reference.
Hello? Okay.
Robert Rosetti, Rosetti Development with Scott Seabans, my soil scientist. We were here last month.
Great.
Excuse me, Al Bon Giovanni made the presentation. He is not here this evening. He is my licensed surveyor and the mastermind behind all the lines on the paper.
Okay, glad you brought your soil scientist. I'm just gonna brief the commission quickly on map amendments because we do have some new members. And this may be their first time going through a map amendment. So section fifteen dot four of our regulations, any petition requesting changes or amendments to the inland wetland water course map in Newington, Connecticut shall contain at least the following information: the petitioner's name, mailing address and telephone number, the address or location of the land affected by the petition, the petitioner's interest in the land affected by the petition, and maps showing the geographic location of the land affected by the petition, and the existing and proposed wetlands and water course boundaries as such land in accurate detail together with documentation supporting such proposed continuous boundaries, locations, and the reason for the requested action. Section fifteen dash one, any person who submits a petition to amend inland wetlands water course map, Newington, Connecticut, shall bear the burden of proof for all requests map amendments. Such proof may include, but is not limited to professional interpretation of aerial photography and remote sensing imagery, resource mapping, soil mapping, and other information acceptable to the agency. If such person is the owner, developer, contact purchaser of the land, which is the subject of the petition, or if the person is representing the interests of such an owner, developer, or purchaser in addition to the information required in section fifteen dot four of these regulations, the petition shall include A, the name, mailing address, telephone number of the owners of such land and owner agents and other representatives. B, the names and mailing addresses of the owners of a budding land. C, documentation by soil scientists of the distribution of wetland soils on said land. Such documentation shall at a minimum include the report of the soil scientists documenting the location of soils on the land and the map of the said land indicating the flag locations set by the soil scientists and defining the boundaries of the wetland soil types and the maps showing the proposed development of the land in relation to existing proposed wetland and water course boundaries. And additionally, section fifteen six, water course shall be delineated by a soil scientist, geologist, ecologist, or other qualified individual. Such qualified individual shall also attend the public hearing for a map amendment. And section fifteen dot seven, a public hearing shall be held on petitions to amend the inland wetlands and water course map. Notice of the hearing shall be published in the newspaper having general circulation in Newington at least twice at intervals of not less than two days and not more than fifteen days or less than ten days. And the last not less than two days before the date set for the hearing. All materials including maps, documentation relating to the petition shall be open for public inspection. All right, so Chris, the items for petitioner's names, mailing addresses, has that all been satisfied?
To my satisfaction, yes.
To your satisfaction, is it available for the public to view if they wish to see this information?
It is.
Okay. The butters have been notified?
I believe so.
Was, the only thing I got in my packet was the map. I didn't see a list of the butters' names and addresses, and I didn't see the soil scientist's report.
I don't know why the soil scientist. You didn't provide the report, yeah. The only thing I can think of is it was likely in the packet for last month. We don't generally send out repeats.
All right, but this is not last month. This is a brand new, open item. This is a public hearing. It's separate from any other items on our agenda. Right, but it needs to be included in this petition. And we don't have it this evening.
Okay.
All right, and the other information also that's required by our regulations need to be included in the petition. So if you can get that to us for the next meeting. Okay, well, that's the other thing too, now that you mentioned the application, is the application's not attached in the packet. We don't have the application.
Excuse me, Chris, could you speak up or turn the mic up a little higher?
Sorry, my microphone wasn't on. So
Thank you.
We amended their existing application for this house. We did not make them submit an independent application. Provided this additional document show the wetlands as a request for the map amendment. All of the other information is in the application for the original application. The information required is in these documents. And it was delivered for the October meeting. We did not send out repeat information for this. We did run the ad in the newspaper. You know, why, why did we not have a separate application for the public hearing? Everything should be a separate entity. The application is one entity, the public hearing for a map amendment. It's a separate entity. This procedurally, this is incorrect.
If I might.
Sure.
It was kind of our fault because we were kind of juggling that around at the time and we kind of all agreed at the time that that was a kind of a compromise to, at least that we would make them do the math amendment, but we didn't, I guess we didn't take in all this other information that you're in, into consideration at the time.
The information is in the application package. If you came into the office and requested to review the information, it is all in one. Okay, the commission doesn't go into your office to get this information. The information is to be provided to the commission prior to the public hearing beginning, so we have it and we can run a smooth public hearing. I need that information distributed to the commissioners so they have it so they can disseminate it. I understand that, and it has been delivered to each member of the commission either in October or November. That is not the correct method. This is a separate entity. This is a public hearing. This is not the application for the develop. This is an application. This is a, a public hearing for the wetlands amendment, map amendment. This is not the application. As John pointed out, we did not treat it that way last month. Again, that's procedural error.
Chairman Zelik, I'm Paskowitz here.
Commissioner Paskowitz.
In, in, say good time, he's saying noting all your comments which are noteworthy. Can this be put on the screen from the documents that we have? So everybody can look at those same documents from the application that's been presented towards this, towards this map amendment application. That's what I'm asking.
Okay, so if, if I understand what you're proposing is if the information was submitted in other applications that it be carried forward into this application and be displayed on the screen if we need it?
Yes, that's from, we're alluding to.
Okay, I'm, I'm, I can, I can go for that. All right, other commissioners?
Sounds reasonable.
Sounds good.
Very good. All right. I was gonna say, even if he has it on file, like says it's in the, in the office somewhere, if somebody chose to view it. And it should be part of the record today too, so.
Chris, do you have it available this evening to display for us? I can put them up on the screen, one document at a time. Yep. You wanna scroll through that now? So, all right, we'll let the, the applicant begin, but before we do officially met each other, point to make? No, that's, okay, very good. Go ahead with your presentation.
Sure. Thank you. So for the reason we're back here this evening, this last hearing, it was the discussion about whether or not the wetland line should be delineated on the town maps. So that's why we're here this evening. We have then since prepared a new wetland delineation map line, which do they have a, the small version?
It was in their packet for this month, yes.
Which doesn't show the new line.
The blue line is the new line.
Well, that blue line we had before, but the, the red line is the one that has to follow the property line around the, around the, around the property. We're moving it off the property to the property, except that part where it's actually on the property.
You'd move it to the blue line.
We're moving it to the blue lines.
Yeah, the red line is moving to the blue line and it's gonna follow the whole property line all the way down. See what they did on the subdivision? See how they moved it on the subdivision? They put it right to the property line and skirted right around, followed the line.
Chairman, I've not seen the map on the screen. On my screen.
All right, Commissioner Paskowitz, do you have it in your packet?
I have it in front of me. But if you're pointing to something, we're not seeing it on the screen.
Okay, good point. Chris, can you put the map up? I'll see what I can do.
I don't think that's a difficult thing to overcome, but, but the line has to follow the property. This is, we're moving it off of the property.
I can't see it from here.
But the wetlands are not at the property.
They are now, if we're gonna accept your if we're gonna accept your map amendment.
That's the US soil science and rural services.
We can't remove them from the neighboring property and.
I still don't see the map.
I can't go on neighboring properties. Alls I can look at is the parcel that I'm inspecting.
If you look at the map, the existing map, you see how it follows that property line and follows, goes right around the corner. Yep, that's what they did when they got that approved for that subdivision. They moved it right to the property.
John, could you wait a minute, man, right on, put the map up because I'm not seeing what you're talking about on the map that's being pointed to.
Right, if we could all just be patient and wait for Chris to get the map up.
If I can.
Okay, go ahead.
I believe the request is that, so you can see the, the blue here is.
All right, let's, let's wait till the map is up.
So Commissioner Paskowitz.
No, thank you.
Map is up.
Thank you.
So the, the blue are the delineated points, and so I think what we're looking for is kind of what you, the amended wetland map, so this red line, what that would look like after that, because you can see here the blue is off of the but we'll have to like still follow the parcel line to show the amended Newington data rather than the delineated points. I think, if, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's what you're, we're trying to do.
Not at all. The line has to be moved to the property line because we're not changing the wetland delineation on the neighboring property. So we are changing it on this property, so it can't be on their property still. Otherwise, they're still fully in the wetland by the town map. I'm assuming this is just a temporary drawing here. And Mr. Bon Giovanni plans to move it over to, to where it should be. So we follow that northeast.
I follow what you're saying, like technically, you know, as far as your regulations, whatever, but then when you start looking at like upland review areas and if you start looking at, like, say you want to maintain a certain buffer, if you put it right at the property line, then that wouldn't be correct.
I don't know. I, I think if Mr. Bon Giovanni was here, he would, he would understand what I'm saying, so.
Yeah.
Well, John, could you, could you point out on the map?
Nothing's changed here. Nothing's changed here from the map you showed us last week.
I'm not seeing what you're talking about. I see a blue line and a red line, but I don't see a dissemination of moving it, moving it to where.
That's the exact map we had last week. I mean, last month.
I don't understand the issue.
I don't know how to help you, Alan.
Well, you, you explain it better.
Okay, if you want, if you want, we're here for a map amendment. We're trying to move the wetlands off of this property, which most of us all agree that it should moved off the property.
Well, slow down. What line to where?
The, the red line is the wetland line, the town wetland, and that's what we're trying to amend. And we would push that to, to the property's boundaries. That's how it's always been done before, and that's how it was done on the subdivision. You can see exactly what they did.
John, slow down. Can you show on that map where you want, where you have a change, have it moved?
I can't. I have no, I have no control over the map.
Are you, are you? John, let the person who's in control of that move it for you with the pointer so we can explain where it's the changes that you're interested in.
So are we asking?
Okay, I'll try and see if Chris is capable.
Chris, if, if you were to take these delineated points.
Yep.
Update the GIS shapefile. How would you do that? Like, I think Mr. Bashan is, that's who you're asking.
I think he's asking to connect the blue to the red. Is that what you're asking?
No, no, this line here.
Yep.
Has to move over to here, come down here, then it's only gonna come back off the line a little bit where he's got it shown. And it's gonna come back to here and right over. I don't think it's a.
So, it's okay.
It's the same.
So I, I now, I now understand what.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay.
I think what he's asking for is like to end my delineation at like between like flag number six and seven. And then to show, and then to show the red line all along that southern boundary, so, right?
So if we look at the screen where the cursor is, and forgive me for being delayed, the cursor's a little slow. But he's, as, as John pointed out, he's asking to have the blue line continued along the property line. Ah. Yeah, up until it touches to the red line and then down at the bottom, the same thing until it touches the red line at the corner of the neighboring property. So not just this part that's flagged here, but to show it as connecting to the red in this property corner here and then connecting to the red up here along that boundary line. John, is that what you're saying?
That's, that's the way I understand it.
Okay.
Whether you call it a blue line or a red line, that's where the, that's where the wetland boundary should be, I think.
Okay.
Okay, wait a minute, thanks. But where does, where does your information come from, from wetland delineation? Do you speak to that, John?
I don't, I don't understand the question.
Well, I, I think he's act, asking for the factual information that allows the line to be connected. Where, where is the actual?
Because we're accepting the, the math amendment that there's no wetlands on this property. We, we can't say that there's no wetlands on the neighboring property, so the line has to be moved to the border. Just like you could see they did on the subdivision. They moved it right to the border and wrapped it right around.
So I, I follow what you're saying now, and I don't think it's a stretch to have Mr. Bon Giovanni adjust this as you request.
I know, I don't think it's a request because otherwise we're leaving two, two wetland boundaries on the same property.
Sure.
When I first saw the map, I thought it was just, you know, that we were gonna see a modified one when we came here, but you can't have both.
No, I'm, I, I follow what you're saying now, and I don't think that's too difficult to provide.
I don't think so either. It should be simple for him, you know, as long as.
Well, thank you.
Everyone is, if everyone else is.
Information for the movement of the line in the direction it should go. Otherwise, it would so, you know, in time, in continuity, I couldn't even figure out what you were talking about.
No, I agree, because it's, you need a continuous information.
Doesn't the wetland delineations for the wetland map go where the soil scientist has flagged the soil types?
Yes.
Not, not where, where the property line, the property line is irrelevant. We don't adjust the wetland boundaries to the property lines. We adjust them to what the soil scientist has flagged.
Yes, on that line, we're gonna follow his line, but everywhere else, we have to follow the property line because we can't change the, we can't say that there's no wetlands on the neighboring property. We can't change the map.
The property line, that's not correct. Delineation doesn't follow property line. It follows the delineation of the scientist providing the flags.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Paskowitz. So what do we do in the case where the, the end of the blue line is dangling? We, we have, for lack of a better term, we got a dangling line. How do you connect that boundary? Well, where does the boundary, you know, terminate?
It's gotta follow the property line.
It goes back, so then from, from that dangling ending point, it now.
Back to old information.
It now connects back to the property line of the adjacent property. Is what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, this is Commissioner Sadeal, so what we have to do here on the ends, we gotta reconnect to the, to what the Newington map is as far as the wetland boundary. And then there's a parallel line that hundred foot buffer goes along that line there. It, it, it takes the shape of that blue line. That would be the hundred foot buffer. So we have to connect ends and where the town map starts. That's where we have a jagged edge, if you will, as far as where the new property line starts, so if you follow what I'm saying, we've, we go back to what the Newington wetland line is at the either end of the new line. Because we don't have any data for that, but we moved the hundred foot buffer parallel, so to speak, symmetry to what the blue line is. That's my, that's what I.
Okay, so, um, help me understand then what happens with the red line? Um, I'm gonna say it, that's running north and south between the two properties. What happens with that red line? Is that then vanish?
That's, you know, that's, that's the property line. That's not wetland line. That's not a hundred foot buffer line.
Well, well, both. Well, it's both. So, so it is a property line, but on this map, it's currently the wetland boundary line. So does that wetland boundary line then uh, no longer exist?
Well, then we would take a vertical line from point nine at the lower left and go up north to that other corner point, you know what I'm saying? That would be up to where the new line starts. It's a, almost a vertical line to where that corner is, if you follow what I'm saying.
Okay, and then.
Map on a neighboring property.
And then the line between the two properties, that wetland boundary line no longer exists, right? That goes away?
Yeah, the existing one, that's correct.
All right, now. Okay, so that satisfies, I think you said it was point nine. How about at the other end? I don't know, what is that, point one?
Yeah.
Where would, where would that line connect to?
Where is it currently on the old map? I don't see it. Where's that wetland line? Same thing. If that's there, then we gotta go up connect the dots basically where that cursor is down to point one. If that's the wetland line. I always thought that was the hundred foot buffer personally, because you're so far from where you look where the wetlands are. You're way up onto the street already, but if that's the wetland boundary, we gotta connect the dots again and hit that, that line. Yep. Where he's pointing to.
So basically what I said?
I'm, I'm just asking because I can't see the screen. I didn't mean to be funny or anything. This, this is what I come up with. So that's the connect, this is, we use his line because some of it comes into.
Well, this, this goes away.
So. No, we can't, we can't touch this because this is other property.
What, what, what number is that? Is that nine?
Yeah, but that's on someone else's property. So we can't change maps on other people's property.
Well, that's where, that's where we've been flagged. That's, we have to.
Then you open up a can of worms, but anyway, this is the easy way to do it, I think. And I think of Mr. Bon Giovanni was very, very great, but.
Okay, well, well then you, you bring up a good point about not changing the wetland boundary on somebody else's property. Is that correct, Chris? We cannot accept this because it's on someone else's property, this flagging? I, I would not necessarily agree with that. I think it's already been flagged. I think the question before you at this point is, can you just? I think the question before you at this point is, can you just connect it? I'm almost going to say arbitrarily to the. Corner of the adjacent property just to close the map out. All right, so I I think we have. Two questions, and um, I think one of them is legal, which needs to go to the town attorney. Can we? Change the wetland boundaries? On someone else's property, if that's where it's been flagged. As part of this application. And um, then the other one, I guess, is technical. How do you connect that, that line back to the property? Can you do that? So I I need. An okay from the town attorney. To understand if we can accept this flagging because it's on someone else's property. Um, can we change that boundary line? On someone else's property as part of this. Public hearing. Um, assuming that those property owners have been notified. Because this is a public hearing, right, and adjacent property owners are notified. Um. And if we can't. Change. The wetland boundary on someone else's property as part of this application. Can we? Set the property, or excuse me, the the wetland boundary on the property line. Of the owner. Good question. I think, I I, I think for the purposes of the. Uh, um, application that is. Following after this public hearing, if the applicant were so inclined to accept his property boundary. On the south and east as the wetland line. Uh. That would move this process along for him. But I don't know if we can legally do that, because that's not where it's flagged. I understand that. So we we need a ruling from the town attorney on this.
Chairman Selig?
Um, is that Commissioner Pasquet?
Yes. Um, would the town attorney be referring to? Uh, s- statute? Or wetlands, or what would he be referring to? Red information?
Uh, we'd have to ask the town attorney what he'd be referring to. I I won't know until he's reviewed this.
So there's nothing in the regs that we know of regarding that?
Nothing, yeah, nothing in the regs. You know, everything regarding uh inland wetland map amendments I read to you this evening prior to starting this.
Correct. But this controversy about the line is interesting. This has never come up before in the years I've been here. The way to leave the line that's on the map and, and that's it, I can only, since it becomes the issue, I don't, I just don't understand. How it got so complex. Or this should have been thought for it prior to the meeting.
Go ahead, Commissioner Bishan.
Yeah, it doesn't have to be complex, it's very simple. Uh, we don't, we don't have to, it's not a matter of whether we accept his flags or not, because they're on someone else's property. He did that as a, whatever, courtesy or to help him understand himself, I think, better where the lot, where the actual line was, I'm assuming.
Um, just to clarify, I'm not a surveyor, so when I go out on these sites and if they're not like flagged, like the the points of the property.
Mm-hmm.
I'm, I'm sort of.
Even though you were off the property.
Right, right.
Okay, so.
Um, so I generally, so just try to stay obviously on a property, but.
Interesting, so I think it's pretty simple. We have his mark, his lines on the property that he was, you know, paid to survey. And we have to connect the lines back to to where they. Uh, where where they connect, where they touched on it on that property. We have to move that red line completely off of that property. To the property line, except the little spot where he's got it marked there. I think that's where that complicated, but.
The o- the other thing you may want to consider is if if. The adjoining property owners, you know, don't want their wetlands flagged on their. Property, or if you just don't want to see those. Flags, you could always just change it to just say like approximate wetland line. And take off those flag numbers.
Yeah.
If that helps you.
Those don't, well, I mean, they they they. They're valid because you did them.
That's right.
But they're not valid for mapping. Necessarily, because we cannot change someone else's property's map.
Right.
It does sort of look like what was done when this line was moved to create the lot next door.
Yeah, that's exactly what was done, you could tell.
I mean, yeah, it follows the property line. I've never seen wetlands do that before.
That was done, that was done intentionally.
Wetlands fa- uh founded, the Wetlands Commission founded, what year?
The commission would have been founded sometime in the mid seventies after the passage of the Clean Water Act.
Was developed in the late sixties?
Sixty-eight, yes.
So then the wetlands was done after the fact, this was a boom, 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 boom.
And our wetlands map originally was based from aerial photography done by the Soil Conservation Corps, uh, it's sometime in the late fifties and early sixties.
I don't think it's that complicated, but.
Exactly what you're saying. Normally what you would do is you would just. If you don't have the right outside of yours, you just leave that as wetland, it's already mapped as wetland, you leave it.
That's right.
And then follow the property line, and then if it crosses in. Follow the wetland line until it's property line again, you follow that. And then if the wetland line comes into the property again, you do that. And then. Go back along the parcel line.
So it's a drawing exercise at that point, except for the parts where uh where the wetlands flagging comes into the parcel.
I wish Mr. Bon Jevani was here because I'm sure he would straighten this all out.
Quick question for the soil scientist. When you were doing this, as far as this last flag going to the north.
Yeah.
Did it, did the wetland continue on that? You know, keep pushing towards the east? Like I said, when I got to where I knew where the property line was, I I usually go over just slightly, just so you have an idea where it's going. I'm just wondering if you went any further north along that line. Water, an intermittent water course on that. Other property, I have it shown on my soil report. So that is also a regulated thing, and it's a, it's a, you know, an obvious permanent defined channel. It kind of goes around that other. Whatever the parcel is to the east. Um, so, and I'm not sure that that's really shown on the. Well, I'm not sure if it's on the town map or not. Um. It's shown on the. One of the maps that the town that sent me, um, I think it's on the. Not maybe the National Wetland Inventory map? Yeah, it's shown on the the National Wetland Inventory map. There's a blue water course. And like I said, I show it on my soil report, on my soil sketch map.
I may be way of building my page right here, but that just seems to be the most common sense.
But but again, like, you can't, if following your theory there, you can't go by what I'm telling you what's on the. Other, I mean, I'm just visually looking at it, like standing on the.
Using that as a.
Yeah, I'm standing.
They trust your work on it, but we're not going to change it.
So even though, like I looked, and it and it's shown on some of the. Town and the federal mapping is a water course, um, I'm just visually looking from the property line over.
Sorry to raise all this confusion, but.
No, it's.
I mean, I don't see how we would leave it like this with two different, you know. We're still leaving the town wetland line there, or is that was?
Are you?
Is that what was going to be proposed, that we were still going to leave that red line?
I believe Alan's assumption would be that is the existing line, he was showing the existing line and the new line. And the existing line would be eradicated, and then the new line, so obviously now.
I think it's just a matter of connecting those lines.
Connect the dots.
That the town would do the amendment and not the. Um.
No, that, no, no, that's part of the application. The application has to show us what they're requesting for the boundary.
Okay, so they would show the actual amendment to the town.
And we're all in agreement that there's no wetlands there, we just try to move the lines to the right place, I think. Got you, that could be a condition, an easy condition, I don't, even if it's not changed tonight. Correct, in my opinion.
Exactly.
Well, wouldn't go straight on that line all the way, it's got to come in a little, no. Down where he's got it flagged, it's got to come in a little bit. It's got to follow his his work there on the.
I think what they're saying is, is going like maybe up. No, 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 the way he has, the way he has the south side drawn is proper.
Yeah, that looks a little bit.
At a point.
The little bit that he's got the blue on your property. You have to follow that line, we're not going to go just on the property line.
For sure.
No.
I was just.
Line wouldn't.
Trying to get an idea of what.
Yeah.
Which I think makes the most sense, I agree.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna, you're gonna amend the uh.
Yeah, we'll make a revision to the map showing that the red line be not shown and the new line is connecting the dots. As per discussion.
Okay, um, Chris, do you have the current um wetland aerial? Um, I'm curious what what this wetland is. Uh, is it part of a bigger wetland? I heard a water course was mentioned. Bear with me, this is way too small a screen for this. So do you think we still have to get the town attorney to? Well, I'd say okay to that.
Oh, Chris, if you have my soil report on my sketch map, it shows that big N W Y wetland that's to the south.
My list is where the actual.
Okay.
Wetland delineation is.
Here, GIS.
Can legally put it on the border.
Hmm.
Not according to what was flagged.
Okay, so we get the town attorney.
Yeah.
And then. Oh, Jevani redraws it and then he resubmits.
Exactly.
I beg you. So this is the town's GIS showing. The bluish area here is the current map wetland. And you can see, I'm going to have to turn this off so you can see, hold on a moment. Come on. It's taking a moment to uh turn this layer off, so. Underneath this blue, you can see a thin blue line here, and that is the water course.
I- is that a named water course?
It is not. It, um. I don't personally know if it is a perennial or if it is an intermittent, uh. But it is, um. It is at a minimum a water course, I would, I would call it that and leave it at that for the moment. It drains down into the Churchill uh Bridge condominium. Uh, that eventually becomes, well, here's this, you can see it here where my cursor is. That is the wetland pocket that shows on the National Wetland Inventory. Uh, and then this, here it goes, it did finally turned off. This blue line here is that water course we're talking about, and that drains into this pocket where it then. Flows into the uh, the brook that runs through Churchill Drive and that condominium down down there. Uh, to the east of all of this is the uh, Berlin Turnpike. And the property in question is that uh motel down there. I do not know the name of the motel.
Yes.
Okay, everybody else knows the name of the motel. Sorry, I've never stayed there, just for the record, I've never stayed there. Uh.
And and the property that.
And the property we're interested in is this one where my cursor is currently circling. And as we said earlier, there's a lot of record from nineteen sixty-eight and just was never built on.
Yeah, it's, it's already part of the quest.
Okay.
I I I saw the property and I saw that stream bed and it's very dry. I mean, there's a little bridge there that the motel put up, but. It looks like at best it would be intermittent. There was nothing in it when I saw it, but we did have a dry summer.
Yeah, there was no flow at the time that I was there.
So that larger wetland is all owned by the uh, the motel? Um, no, part of it is owned by Churchill Bridge, that's this portion over here.
Right.
But the majority, that larger section is the the motel. All right, um, so while we have the uh soil scientists here, do you have the soil scientist's report? Can we bring that up and maybe you want to speak to that this evening? So we'll get that out of the way. All right, Scott, where do you want me to go?
Uh, probably just go straight to the uh. The soil map is probably the the main thing. Um, but for the record, I'm Scott Stevens, registered professional soil scientist with Soil Science around services. Been with the uh firm since uh the late nineteen eighties. Um, I inspected the site on August. In August and um September of two thousand twenty-one. Um. Dug numerous holes with a spade and auger, looked at the soil colors and textures and. Depth to modeling and um other soil characteristics in order to classify out the types of soils on the site. Um, I did flag the wetlands as you can see it. Um. On my sketch map, and it's also shown on Alan Bon Jevani's survey map. The nine wetland flags that I put up on the property. Um, like I said, there's also an intermittent water course that's off the property to the east and a. Permanent defined channel, there was no flow at the time of my. Site inspection, but it is shown on other um maps as a, as a water course, so. Um, I included that on my, on my uh sketch map for setback purposes. Um. Soil types that I found on the property, the uh wetland soils are aquents, which are. Poorly and very poorly drained disturbed soils, so they're not a natural soil type. It's usually something that's either been. Partially filled in or excavated out, so it's it's not natural. And then also the Scarborough muck, um, it's number fifteen. So the the aquents is AQ and the Scarborough muck wetland soils are fifteen. And mo- mostly, you know. Along that eastern property boundary. And um, to the south of the site is where the wetlands are. Upland soils on the site were um the Ellington silt loam, which is a mildly well-drained outwash, that's number twenty. Um. The Hartford sandy loam. Number thirty-three. That's another outwash, and then there was three oh eight, it's, which is. Uterithanth, uterithanth smooth, which again is a disturbed soil. Where more than two feet of the soil surface has. Um, in this case, um, been filled over or disturbed. Um. The parcel basically, like they were saying, was developed, the subdivision was what, the late fifties or early sixties? Um, that was before the wetland regulations came into play in the early seventies with the Clean Water Act. Um, so this is like basically a parcel at the very end of the subdivision that. Um, likely when they built the roads, some of the soils were moved around and pushed off, you know, towards the wetlands. Um, so a lot of it does have, you know, disturbed uterithanth soils on it. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer your questions.
Okay, I I do have a question, so that. Um. Curved line that goes through the property boundaries, is that the wetland delineation?
That's just my sketch.
That's just your sketch.
Yeah, so my sketch is based on where I think the property lines are and.
Uh-huh.
Um, basically, I'm showing you the. The delineation between the upland soils and the wetland soils.
Okay, so that was the beginning sketch and then this is.
Yes, so I sent, I send this sketch map to Alan and then Alan goes out with his survey. Equipment and locates all my flags and plots them onto the survey map.
Okay, thank you. Questions from commissioners?
Yes, Chairman Delik. Would not, would not these lines that are indicated there be in the deed as to the boundaries?
A boundary would be indicated in a deed, but not the wetlands themselves.
That's not what I'm asking.
Okay.
This law, this law has already been established in the past.
Yes.
So why are we trying to reestablish the line? Or any line? If it's already been established as a building law.
Well, when this subdivision was originally approved, there were no. Well, when this subdivision was originally approved, there were no wetland regulations, so. It was, it was really never probably submitted with the application, or if they did, they just did it out of the goodness of their hearts. They didn't, they weren't really required by law to, to show wetlands on this, you know, original subdivision map. But now that the land is being proposed to be developed, you have to go by the, the current regulations, which obviously wetlands and water courses are regulated, so we have to delineate those and then show them on the plans.
But it's a grandfather law. Why do we have to go now and do that if it's already a grandfather law? What's the point?
If I may. Commissioner Strinsky?
The, the town mapping still has it labeled as wetland, so. The applicant sent out a soil scientist and a surveyor to show that it is not wetland. And now they are requesting to amend the town data that says it's a wetland. So this doesn't have to do with the property line, it has to do with the wet.
Mr. Chairman.
All right, Commissioner Siedel.
Thank you. The soil scientist, you see where you have a label WF, wetland flag number one, right? You see that? Then you go up along the property. Why is it stopped there? When you go up to 20 plus 308, why doesn't that line follow your line, dot, dot, dot line that's on the right? Why would that line continue up where you have the 2308 up there? Why would that, why did you stop the line right there?
I, I can't, I can't inspect other people's properties without their permission, so I generally.
Well, excuse me. Well, I thought this, this odd shape with the red line was the property line. Where you see where the 208, 308 is on the upper right there, isn't that part of the, yeah, isn't that part of the property?
It, it is. On that northern part of the, of this parcel, there is the Ellington and the, and the urethane soil types. There, there are no wetlands on that northern portion of our, of our property. There is a water course off the property to the east. As it's shown, as it's shown on my sketch map.
Right. But would there be a line to the left of that to show where the, that intermittent water course ends as far as being part of wetland soil?
Well, like I said, I can't inspect other people's properties that are off my site, so I'm, I'm only standing on the property line and
Right.
and giving, giving you an approximation of if there's any regulated areas off-site.
So to the right of that 308, you're crossing over on somebody else's property?
Where the water course is, yes, that's on a, that's on a adjoining property owner's land.
And, and I think it might help the commissioners. I, I think when, when we started the the conversation, you mentioned that the property lines were not flagged, so you, this was a best guess as to where the property lines were.
That's right. I'm literally looking at my phone and like any of you could and looking at like a Google map or I have some other applications which show me approximate property lines, but with that GPS, it's, you know, it could be off 10, 20 feet.
I think you did pretty good.
So, yeah, thanks.
So does that make sense, Commissioner?
Well, yeah, but I'm, I'm still thinking, yeah, but looking at this logically, wouldn't be that line where you have the 308s up to the 20, wouldn't that be a, you know, not, you're on the edge of the property, but wouldn't that, yeah, would that be a wetland boundary, a natural wetland boundary without stepping over the line on the right, but on the left, that would be a logical border there for the wetland that you could map? That will be the one.
Yeah.
It stands to reason if we're watching, even if this is a hand sketch, I think what you gotta do, what you can do, but can you, in your expert opinion, that line would be a natural continuation, and would you stop it right at the corner, right there? That would be, you know, that's it. You're done.
Commissioner, we, we concur with you, and we will continue that, that line. We'll, we'll move on in northeast direction, and then it'll, it'll go hard west at the end.
Chairman Delik?
Commissioner Pascuits?
Can we make this a condition and move forward?
No, it won't be a condition. The applicant is going to change their, their request to, to map along the boundary, but we also need to verify with the town attorney that that's going to be okay. And also the open question as to whether or not we can make a map amendment on someone else's property.
So, yeah, I concur. I understand what you're saying.
All right, but if he changes the map as requested, he's no longer doing a map amendment on a neighboring property? Yeah, but we still have the open question. We, we, we should understand. For future reference, if we see something like this come in again, you just say, you know, that, that's, you know, we're not, we're not gonna entertain looking at changing it if it's for, if the flag means it's on someone else's property. So we need a clarification on that.
How about this?
Regardless.
Another compromise, but see if it's palpable. Have it reviewed at the same time as he's changing those lot, those maps and have it reviewed in that time, make that a condition. If the town attorney says, you know, puts the brakes on, then it comes back or, or it doesn't.
So we have that as an option.
Yeah, yeah, so it would be a part of a condition that.
If, if.
The saying, so potentially move forward.
If we need the condition.
What's that?
If, if needed.
Well, no, I'm saying make it a condition now, a condition of approval, if we were to approve it. That the town attorney would have to review it before it could, before it could.
We're gonna wait for the, the map to be revised and come back to us, because that's the map that we need to approve.
That's correct.
Can't approve a, a condition on a map. The map has to have a solid line. It, it can't have a condition. Can't draw a condition. Put it that way. Well, Commissioner Siedel, did you?
I concur with your, your assessment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All right, so we've, we've gone through the soil scientist's report. Map showing proposed development. Do we want to entertain that this evening or do we want to wait until the, the map is been corrected?
What's that? Were you asking?
So as part of the requirements in the regulations, we need to have a map showing the proposed development.
Well, you do have that. You have a site plan.
Can we, can we see it?
Sure.
It's not in our packet.
But it would be anywhere within that, within those offsets, I guess. We have it on this map here, the buildable area. But I know what you're saying. Yeah, it was on the other map that we had before. They showed a house. Interestingly, on a slab. Is that for any particular reason or soil conditions?
Any further questions?
Well, I would just, just, just to reiterate what I was getting at, just to make my argument, and it kind of like supports the application applicant here, but I understand there's a consensus against it, but I'll just say again that if we conditioned the approval on connecting the dots of the lines where we think it should be, where we know it should be, and then also that second condition would be that as long as that passes muster with the legal review, so that's, I just wanted to say that that's where I'm coming from.
Do you have any other comments regarding the site plan?
Uh, no, just a question about the being on a slab.
Is that a concern?
No.
Commissioners online? Any questions regarding the site plan?
Not here. Chairman Zell.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, seeing none in, in the room. The other item we were looking for, regulations require is the names and addresses of the abutters. We have that?
As a list?
Yeah.
I don't know. Let's find out.
And I'll ask the applicant, have the abutters been notified?
No idea.
Here's the list. I presume from the fact we have the list that the letters went out.
Do we have a sample letter? I don't want to make any assumptions.
Some people in the audience are shaking their head now.
Okay. You're one of the immediate abutters? Curse, isn't it required for a public hearing that the abutters be notified?
I believe that's true. I don't see a letter. Doesn't mean it wasn't sent out. I just, I don't see it here, and if the people who are here say they didn't receive one, then it is.
Well, we'll get to them. We're gonna allow them opportunity to speak.
It is possible it didn't go up.
Chris's townsend, send those, yeah.
The town sends them. Yeah, staff handles that.
It's in the regulation that there's supposed to have a sign when they make change to wetlands. That's a proposed, that's a proposed change. All right, anything further from the applicant? Because I want to go to public comment, allow the public to speak.
The only thing I might want to add, just since we're a public hearing, so it's sort of like resetting everything that we did at the last meeting. And I know for quite a while we discussed the old soil wetland line and why it is changed so much from like what I delineated out in the, you know, what's currently out in the field. And we discussed at some length, and the chairman wasn't there and maybe some other people weren't there, but I did discuss how the old soil maps were prepared by the Soil Conservation Service, and my father, for instance, worked for the Soil Conservation Service, and they, they were looking at probably, according to what my dad told me, about 200 or 300 acres a day, and they were basically looking at mostly aerial photos and just drawing lines on maps of soil types and wetland boundaries, so a lot of those old soil maps and old wetland lines, they, they're not like done at, you know, high quality, you know, high definition type mapping, and they were never originally flagged. They were just literally mapped, you know, sketched on on aerial photos or topo maps. So a lot of those are, are basically incorrect, and I think, I think like you say, the old SAS map, I think it was 1951 was when they did it. So it hasn't been updated in a long time, and a lot of those old maps were just transferred right into the town GIS. And they don't really get changed until an application comes along like this, and then somebody like myself goes out there and does some more high intensity inspection of the property, so. That, that's the main reason why the, the line is being changed. It's not that it's, the wetlands, you know, really changed a lot, it's just it wasn't originally accurately shown to begin with, so.
Just add, on the same token, though, that could have been underwater at one time, because we know this is all fill. Came out in the last meeting, too, that it's primarily fill.
Fill. There is definitely some fill, but then there was some natural soils on the site, too, so. I, I think it just originally, like I said, they, they showed these broad wetland lines and they weren't. Yeah, and they weren't, they just weren't accurately really shown on the the original soils, so. That's all.
Thank you. All right, I'm gonna ask you guys to vacate and then I'll let the public come forward next. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to public comments regarding this petition for a map amendment. Any member of the public wishing to speak regarding this application, I am very curious to hear about those folks that have not been notified. So if you could just state your name and address for the record?
Christine Valu, 23 Laurel Circle.
Roger Valu, 23 Laurel Circle.
Thank you. So it's my understanding that you were not notified of this public hearing?
No, we found out from seeing it in the paper.
In neighbor, it was all in the paper, it let us know.
Okay. All right, Chris, can you find out who is responsible for sending out those notifications to the abutters? Okay. I won't take in any further during this meeting regarding that issue. I will take that up with the town manager to ensure that this doesn't happen again.
And not that we have any objection to building next door, but I, we bought the house back in 2008. And the question was asked, why did they build next door? Apparently Fish tried many years ago. I guess it was too wet, so they stopped it. And actually, our house has actually, back in the 70s, dropped about six to eight inches. So, you know, I guess it was like a pig farm next door. So I don't know if that was one of the reasons why I didn't do it, but.
You're saying your house dropped?
Yes. Yep, six to eight inches.
That would be pretty remarkable.
It did, and we knew that when we bought it. We had a structural engineer come in, take a look, and they said, yeah, whatever happened back in the 70s, it dropped down.
Just the floor or the entire house? Like the garage floor?
The garage floor went down.
Sometimes floors will settle.
The family room where we have eating system, it's about eight inches higher than everywhere else, so it dropped down this way. In the basement, it actually went down also.
But the house, the rest of the foundation in the house is level, open?
Pretty much level, yes. If you actually look at my kitchen, it looks like there's a cathedral ceiling, but it's not. So it's just, it, but what they did was, when they remodeled it, probably about 10, 20 years ago, they actually left it the way it was and then redid the house. So for me to go in and fix that, we can't do that. So we have to leave it the way it is. So, and I know as far as, you know, every year because the house shifts, we get a crack in our family room, which we fixed it each time, but it happens every year and it's probably just a shift in the land. As far as the land itself, it has dropped. Now I can understand why they want to put a slab, because digging down, I wouldn't be good, so.
I don't know why he said that. And I don't know if I could ask him, but why do you, do you want to put a slab on there? What was the reason for a slab? I didn't hear when he told you before, so, because you asked.
I don't think a reason was given. He said soil conditions.
So, oh. Soil is probably soft.
Yeah.
Okay.
And what in fact, yeah, slap is less expensive for construction.
Yeah.
Because after he came and dug a hole, you noticed that the land, and I know you didn't go down far, we were, I saw him, I was there when they were
Oh, when they were drilling.
Drilling down, you could tell the land did shift down after that, so. I mean, they, you, they can build there, it's their property, but I'm just concerned for the poor people that are gonna buy the house and the structure of it, because it has shifted and sunk down in that area.
Chris, does the, the town ensure that the, the site is suitable for development by soil tests that are taken?
We don't do soil tests, but we do inspections for footings and such as a part of the building permit process, so should he succeed in getting this blessing to go ahead and build, he submits house plans to the building department. And at that point, the building officials monitor the construction of the foundation. Even a slab on grade will have a frost wall and a footing, so that process is reviewed by the building officials.
Yeah, you know, so just to be clear, our purview here tonight is just to amend the map. It's not regarding whether the site itself is suitable for development, but that information is good to come out so that the town engineer can hear it and pass it on to whomever.
And I'm sure there are certain ways with the engineering and the way they build now, they could probably set it up where it will stay up, you know, with all the new technology today.
That's it. But we were never notified of anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other member of the public wishing to speak regarding this application? All right, none in the room coming forward. Any online? Chris?
The only folks online are the commissioners.
Okay, very good. And I guess we'll get a motion to table this for this evening.
If I could be clarifying kind of what we're looking for for the applicants, so that we like, so just thinking from, so I do mapping as part of my job. And so like, if we could give an actual like list of what we're looking for, that way we can kind of expedite it for them, or?
Well, I, I think you understand what you need, right? What's come out from this evening? The applicant understands that, all right. Anything else? Yeah, commissioners online, anything further? I think, can I get a motion? Motion to table? A motion from Commissioner Womet, second.
Christian Pasquet.
Second from Commissioner Pasquet's on favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any extensions? Seeing them, motion carries, table this to the next meeting. All right, very good, thank you. We move on now to public participation on non-agenda items. Any member of the public wishing to speak, come forward. Seeing none in the room, anybody online for us?
Uh, no.
Still none? All right, moving on to new business. All right, all right, we still under public participation.
Couch this because it's. If the public hearing is still.
Gail, I can't hear you, could you put, put the mic down?
Yep, yep. If a public hearing is still open, which means tabling it, I assume, would, because I believe there were more abutters on the list, would they be, will they be notified now of the next public hearing? Okay, just, thank you.
Thank you, Gail.
I will ensure that that list actually gets letters sent to it.
Okay. Moving on now to new business application, IW twenty-five dash sixteen. Town staff breached a beaver dam on Schoolhouse Brook across from thirty-eight Brookdale Ave. Public wants to, or actually the applicant wants to remove the remaining section of the dam, restore the area damaged by the beaver activity. Clean up any remaining debris, which will assist with flood control work. It is within the upland review area in, in our twelve-zone applicant town of Newington Highway Department, contact Rob Hillman, owner of town of Newington. See, the applicant is here. You just state your name and address for the record and give us your presentation.
Sure. Good evening, Rob Hillman, Highway Superintendent, town of Newington. Pretty much, I think it's pretty straightforward, what Chairman Zelikin mentioned, our town staff had identified a beaver dam in the Schoolhouse Brook, south of Mill Pond. Work that we did was within the wetland upland review. We did move a significant tree that had fallen, which lowered the water level about four or five feet. The beavers had done quite a good job building the dam. But we did disturb the soil, we went into the area, and we were only to be able to remove a portion of it at the time, as it was kind of more emergency work than anything else. We identified a, some RCP pipe that had separated, that had connected to, I guess ponds together. So as far as the restoration, we'll go in there and we'll either restore the RCP or use some PVZ pipe in lieu of the RCP, and we'll restore the, the area with whatever seed that town staff decides is best suited for that area. We'll talk to the town planner, we'll talk to the parks superintendent and parks foreman and see what they recommend as far as seeding. The majority of the work has been done, but there is a little more that needs to be done as far as removing the dam and then the restoration. We hope to, we're in the process of leaf season now, so we hope to get that done probably late December, early January, if the weather cooperates.
How did you get access from that little parking lot?
Uh, no, right off the road. It was right off the roadway. It was about halfway down the road.
Off of?
Off Brookdale.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I see where it kind of meanders.
Yeah.
That's, it's pretty much in that location where it kind of narrows down. Yeah.
All right, Chris, can you bring up the photo, because I'm sure the commissioner is online, want to follow along?
And there still is beaver activity there, so I've reached out to our trapper and added to our location for this winter to have him.
So it wouldn't come under just general permit one?
Uh, no.
No.
So regarding the wildlife aspect of this, just tell us a little bit about that. Is this, I, I, you know, because we don't deal with, you know, animal removal and situations where there's, there's wildlife involved. So I just want to make sure that any activity regarding the wildlife was legitimate.
Well, obviously, it was, it was easy to identify that it was a beaver that had taken down the trees and whatnot to, to create the dam, and this is not a common location. There's about five or six common locations that we have in town where there is beaver activity. This is the first, I've been here in my capacity for, well, as superintendent three years, but with the town for seventeen years, and I don't know of any beaver activity there in the past.
Trees chewed.
Have you?
Yeah.
Okay. Typically, we're reactive when it comes to that stuff, we don't go looking for these things, so this is new to me. I've got five, like five or six other locations, as I mentioned. So it'll go on the list for this year, and the, the trappers are all licensed with Connecticut DEP. So they've all been vetted through the DEP, and they have local guys that service Hartford County. A gentleman that's working, that works with Newington has been doing it for quite a few years. So he, he's reputable and he's obviously licensed with DEP. The exact process is of how they trap, I can't speak to that, I leave that to the professionals. But, so if you, if you're looking for information on that, that I do not have.
And the work that you're proposing to do has nothing to do with the wildlife, it's more focused on cleaning up?
Yeah, cleaning up the debris that was left by the beavers and restoring that RCP pipe.
I think it's important to note that in this view on the screen now, the channel is clearly defined. When I went out and met with Rob's foreman, when he was working on breaching the dam, this photo is basically an optimistic view of what it would have looked like at the time. And so our goal is to try and restore this channel back to this condition, getting all of the the beaver dam debris removed. We'll probably have to go find the lodge at some point and remove that and then restore the area as we back out of here and including restoring the channel.
Any flooding like back to Wilson Avenue or?
Yes, we relieved two and a half vertical feet of water. So it was one of these things.
Yeah, it was significant. It was definitely significant. When, when it was relieved, the falls noticeably flowing significantly harder. It was pretty impressive.
We have a picture of that.
I'm just glad that we finally got the name of the brook right now.
I'll do what I can. Google still has it wrong, but we, we, we take it under advisement.
Questions from commissioners? I mean, this, in my opinion, seems pretty strict. Did I see a hand up there?
Yes, one quick question. So what do all the, the triangles and the boxes mean? Are you coming from both sides? What does that mean? Can you explain that?
Yes, that's actually our storm drainage. When I copied this picture over into the report, I included that just because I think it's important to know that these are stormwater outfalls. And where that dam went was in between the two of them. So I left them in there as a reference for myself, so I would have an idea of where this activity was taking place. So the stormwater outfall that comes in from the west, that's the left side, was within the impounded area, and the one coming in from Brookdale, the one coming in from the right or the east, was downstream of the impounded area. So there, they're really just to give me a marker to understand where this activity was taking place. So that's our storm drainage.
I thought Rob said it was halfway down the road.
Yeah, I, I misidentified that when I was looking at the black and white, but up.
Between those.
Yes, yeah, yep.
Anything else, commissioners? I, I was just gonna say, you know, my observation, my opinion here is, this seems pretty straightforward request, not too complicated. Maybe the commission would entertain turning this over to the agent for agent approval rather than waiting on the commission.
Yes, I, I, yes, I agree with you on turning it over to the town engineer, wetland agent.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Pasquet. Other commissioners, I see your heads nodding, but, you know, the record doesn't pick that up.
I would, I would agree with that approach.
Okay, very good. Can I then get a motion to from the commission to turn this over to the agent for agent approval?
So moved.
All right, from Commissioner Womet and second from Commissioner Anderson. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any extensions, any opposed? Okay, passes unanimously, so we'll turn this over to you, Chris. You can work with Rob to do an agent approval on this one.
Thank you.
Moving forward. Next one, and our agenda for this evening is application IW twenty-five dash seventeen to clear sandbar from stream and restore work area at one fifteen Taft Avenue, which will assist with flood control access needed within the upland review area. And in our twelve-zone applicant town of Newington Highway Department, contact Rob Hillman, owner Jose and Emisa Rivera. Rob, again, just for the record, state your name and address and give us your presentation.
Rob Hillman, town of Newington Highway Superintendent. This one is similar to the project that we did on, on Green Lawn Ave at the end, in between Green Lawn Ave. This one is a little unique where they have a bridge going onto their property that goes over the waterway. And this is something that we did semi-regularly in the past, sediment builds up along the embankment and narrows the channel, creating a backup, obviously, of the water. And it's fairly straightforward, in my opinion. We go in there with a backhoe, loader, remove the sediment, restore whatever the banks that we need to with any riprap. And and that's pretty much the extent of it. We'll install a turbidity curtain downstream, as we did on Green Lawn Avenue to eliminate any of the sediment making its way down the, the waterway. And like I said, this is something that we have done in the past, it's been quite a few years since we've actually gotten in there, just due to time not being on our side. And then we, it will be restored as needed with the, with riprap on the embankments.
Basically, the adjoining property of the one that you just worked on.
Um, no, this is.
Yes, it is.
Oh, it is, I'm sorry, yes, my apologies, yes, yep.
And you can see in this image a little bit, the deltas that have built up on either side of the bridge. The bridge is actually triple culvert, so there are corrugated metal pipes that were filled over and then paved. And you can see the, the accumulation of materials there. I'll show you with, with the cursor again. This area all in here is all, all basically sediment that's, that's settled out and is closing off this channel here on the
Downstream side?
This is the downstream side. On the upstream side, unfortunately, the image of the pipe inlets blocks a little bit of it, but right in here, you have a smaller island that's formed between the culverts. And this is, you know, basically, this is all part of our attempts to try and mitigate flood hazards throughout town, like the Green Law project.
Is that a right of way or a utility easement, or is it just a cooperation with the owners?
Cooperative with the old property owners.
Yes.
I spoke to them personally, introduced the project to them, they were, they were happy to hear from us. I don't always get that, so it's nice. Chris, where would this turbidity stream be placed? It would be downstream of the work, so in this image, it would likely go someplace right around here. It's the same curtain we used on Green Lawn, and basically what it is, is essentially a reinforced silk fence with weights on the bottom and floats on the top, so that as they're removing the material from the water, of course, anything that is disturbed and not caught in the bucket would be caught by the turbidity curtain and then removed. Basically, you lift the thing out like a net after the water settles and it's clear again. Uh, thank you for describing it. I, I didn't know the, what, you know, anything about this device, but thank you.
Just out of curiosity, who's we're managing kind of the river itself, who's responsible for managing those culverts?
The homeowner is. There is a limit to my generosity.
Any other questions from commissioners? Again, would commissioners entertain the idea of turning this over to town engineer, wetland agent for approval?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, can I get a motion, please? So move. A motion from Commissioner Womet, second, second from Commissioner Bishant on favor, say aye.
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 Any extensions? Any opposed? It passes unanimously, so this goes off to Chris's list.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Moving on, next item on our agenda. Old business, we have nothing. Item number eight, public participation, non-agenda items. Any member of the public wishing to speak? Seeing none in the room, anyone online?
No new attendees.
Very good. We'll move on to communications and reports. Which one is agent communications?
First item I've got, and this is first time I've run into one of these. We have a notice from well, it's from FA Hesketh, but it is in regards to an application they're making in Farmington that is within five hundred feet of the town, town line, and the application is for maybe it'd just be easier if I read this letter into the minutes. All right, and Sue, I'll get you a scanned copy of it to make it easier for you. It says town of Newington Conservation Commission, Newington Town Hall, plenty Garfield Street, Newington, Connecticut, oh six one one one. Inland Wetlands Application, town of Farmington, our file number twenty-four zero one eight. Dear Commission, please note that Big Y Foods Incorporated made application for a permit to conduct a regulated activity to the town of Farmington Inland Wetlands Watercourses Commission for an activity proposed at the West Farms Mall. The activity is proposed to take place within five hundred feet of the town of Newington. A copy of the application made to the town of Farmington IWC is attached, and that application is attached. And just for reference, they don't have a plan or photograph of it, but I looked it up and it is in that part of West Farms Mall parking lot in the southwest corner, opposite roughly the Barnes Noble. That area now is that permeable pavement, the paper blocks in the grass, like south and east of the JCPenney, on the south end of the mall. So that is correspondence from Farmington. And then addition to that, this is just for reference, twenty-nine twenty-nine Berlin Turnpike has re-applied, that's the Casa Dora restaurant. I believe they expect to be present in, at the December meeting to revisit their plan for that parking lot expansion. And we have an application that did not come in in time to be here tonight. Four forty Commerce Court, that's the insurance company, adjusters building on Commerce Court. I forget the name of the insurance company, but it's been sold. And the new property owner is doing some minor excavations, part of his plans to renovate the building. And that that area is within the upland review area, so that's why they're making an application to the commission, and they also expect to be here for December. that area is within the upwind review area, so that's why they're making an application to the commission, and they also expect to be here for December.
I believe there's also a conservation easement over there.
Yes, there's a, want to say detention pond in the front of that property? It could be a retention, but anyway, there's a
There's a conservation easement on Commerce Court in Fen Road.
Yeah, I can bring that up on the GIS if you'd like, but they're not here tonight to speak, so we can let it go to next month if you'd prefer.
Let it go to next month.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's all I've got.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Rosetti, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, I was just curious as to last month's hearing. Is that a complete separate application than the?
It is not as far as the way we've handled it. We did not do a new application for your public hearing, which would have given you a new number. If you remember at the meeting last month, we were trying to accommodate you by doing this as an amended application. All right, so it does muddy the process a little bit as far as timelines. Well, there's that too.
All right. Thank you.
Moving on to Town Council Liaison Communications.
Good evening. As you can see, Councilor Drager and I are back again as liaisons to the Conservation Commission.
Congratulations on your reelections.
Thank you.
You gotta fight off the competition for everybody wanted conservation.
We said no. This is my, this is actually my third and probably longer for you, so we said no. We're standing, standing firm. So obviously, last week's meeting was the swearing in. It was the organizational meeting. But we did have a meeting on October twenty eighth, which was after the Conservation Commission. We received the final report for the Newington Town Center Master Plan, which was, I think, well-received and very detailed. I'm sure it's available. If anybody is interested, contact the town and you'll be able to get a copy. And under old business, and Chris just left, but he'll be back. The New Britain Business District Streetscape Improvement Project Resolution was was brought forward under old business and presentation regarding that, which
You said New Britain?
New Britain Avenue.
Oh, New Britain Avenue.
Yeah, New Britain Avenue, New Britain Business District Streetscape Improvement Project Resolution, which I had to read it because I couldn't remember all of that. And then the only other things under new business, which we will be looking at in the coming meeting or two, is discussion of an amendment to the overnight parking ordinance. Chief Perry came in and spoke to that, and we had discussion was new business, so it will appear under old business at this next coming meeting.
What are they proposing to amend? What is the amendment?
Couple of options.
Right now, it picks November first, I believe, to April first. And residents are, oh, parking is, you know, an issue here in Newington with people having, you know, multiple cars per household. And currently, it is also from two AM to six AM in the morning, so people are complaining that they have to run out and move their cars in the middle of the night, whatever. And study, studies have been done that in recent years, we haven't had a lot of significant snowfall, you know, in November or, you know, March. So they want to shorten the two proposals, either eliminate it totally and just rely on emergency notification. Or shorten the time period from, let's say, you know, the middle of December till, you know, February, whatever. So that will be discussed. And town manager now is working with the police department and the highway department to see what can be done.
And again, that was under new business, so that will come come forward for the discussion. That's right. You were at agenda setting, so our new minority leader, so.
So go back to the town center plan. So that was, the presentation was made.
Right.
What are the next steps?
It's going to be on this next agenda for the town council to approve it. And again, as the town planner had said, it's not a directive, it's a vision.
Right.
So, but it's, you know, because of there were significant, you know, public outreach, business outreach, whatever. The the final presentation by by the town and by the consultants is, okay, if we approve it, this is is how how we would like the town center to develop. The first has to be approved by the council, and it would like, this is councillor Rada, I mean, as Deputy Mayor Rada said, it was well-received. And this, again, it's not going to prohibit, at this point, we can't prohibit developers from, you know, as long as they're within the zoning or whatever. But should somebody come to us, they'll know that this is kind of like the the direction the town would like to go in and kind of be like a soft, a velvet, you know, moving, moving developers that show interest in our town center to a vision that we would like, rather than just kind of sitting and waiting for somebody to come in. And we don't, and we just kind of approve willy-nilly without any input from the town.
What about the components that the town has jurisdiction over? Like, if there was something to do with the town green, they're going to modify that, remove parking spaces and expand the town green, and there was an arch over the entranceway?
I think that would have to go to
I probably planning and zoning.
Yeah, that little, that little spot where they do concerts.
Right, that, that's the, yeah, the parking, that's
Constitution Square. The green area there.
Okay, yeah, because town green, that's that's historical, that's something
We just put the TV thing there. We just put it there, so now it's going to cost whatever how much to move it out.
It's, it's really, from my perspective, it's putting the town and its residents in the driver's seat, that we we drive development or we have the opportunity now to direct development rather than sitting back and having developers come in and try to drive development, particularly around this this town center plan. And Chris, you had stepped out for a minute. That report is available for folks that Colliers presented to us?
If it's not, it soon will be. Yeah, I believe it is online.
I mean, we all got copies and we saw it, and it was presented to us, but
Was presented as a final draft, right?
Yeah.
Yes, then it would be available.
So there, you know, I'm sure, you know, there are ideas, there's probably low-hanging fruit, so again, it's going to be a discussion at the council as to how we can proceed, where there's funding available for to proceed in certain areas, so more to be presented, more to come. Then the other was consideration of how of the use of the proceeds for that Bud knee road stub that was, we talked about previously, that that was sold. And Gail, you kind of, you asked the question at the council meeting, so I'll let you talk a little bit about that.
Um, no, we we proposed, and it was enthusiastically received by all council members, that the proceeds of the sale of, particularly from, because that was Newington land, and it was sold for forty-four thousand, that that, those funds, rather than be put into the general fund, be put into the land acquisition fund. Because, again, that has historically been underfunded, not funded, although now it's on the agenda, Janet, you know, every year for the past three or four years has put money into that fund. But we need to grow that fund for many purposes, particularly showing that if we ever want to go for a grant, if there is a grant for some kind of open space or whatever, we as a town have to show that we're serious about it.
And, yeah, if the matching funds are needed or, you know, whatever may come up.
So it was, and I think it's going to be on this week's for vote as well to put that money towards the land acquisition fund rather than just putting in. And it's not, it's not a loss because it's actually extra money that the town has gained. It's nothing that we're taking from any other fund or any other activity. Yes, sir.
So you're aware that the state wants to sell Cedar Crest?
Yes.
And do we have any input on that, or are they just gonna?
I do believe
Do it kind of
We will get right of first refusal. And I do believe, actually, I'm not sure how public it's allowed to be, but the town has received the notification from the state offering right of first refusal. But there's also, I believe, a very significant price tag attached to those property.
Why did I lose your name?
I thought the town already exercised that right of refusal a couple of times already, didn't it?
Well, maybe there's a serious buyer. I mean, I don't know, but
There was a
Based on environmental issues.
There was a ten-acre part of the parcel on the north end that was offered and refused on our part a year or so ago.
Where the cottages are?
Where the cottages are.
This is also, I believe, part of that same, it's a, it's a new offer, shall we say.
Chris, what the size of the?
The current offer?
Right.
No, I'm actually not aware of that. So it hasn't reached my desk yet.
Well, it just came from what I understand today.
Yeah, I mean, a current offer if the town wants to buy it from them.
Right. I'm sure that'll come up at the council meeting.
What kind of dollar amount, if you're at liberty to say?
Prefer not to. I mean, I'm not sure whether I'm at liberty to say, frankly, but again, it's more than the sale of Bunny Road would.
It is their process when they put a piece of sale on property out to evaluate it at its highest potential value. So like the cottages were offered at, I want to say it was it was ten million or something like that? It was like an astronomical amount, and, you know, we looked at it and said, well, you know, we'd like to see the condition of the cottages. And I said, no, that's not even on the table. Well, you know, my advice to the town manager was I don't want to pay a lot of money for a piece of property that we can't even inspect. And we didn't think it would sell for that amount, whether it was one million or ten million. So it was just let go.
They're abandoned, right?
They are not occupied. I'm not sure if I'd call them abandoned because I haven't been able to see them.
From within ten years.
I'm not arguing that point. I'm just arguing the semantics of the, of the, what we're calling it. If they're abandoned or if they're just vacant at the moment, I don't, I don't want to
Can't abandon a building for ten years and expect it to be like
I, I understand our police department has had SWAT training in there, so I'm, I'm pretty sure I wouldn't want to occupy one of these things if they've been using tear gas in it.
I think there's also questions about, even though those were, you know, have were habitated at some point, that whole area in terms of the, any kind of abatement issues or contamination issues would be.
Speaking as a wetlands guy.
Yeah.
Now, there is, just in case this isn't something we all remember, there is a large part of that property that we are we have been granted a conservation easement over, and at some point, that process fell through the cracks. And in the last couple of years, through the efforts of the town planner and the, and I'll call Jonathan, the newest town manager, they're trying to get that conservation easement memorialized in an actual
deed.
Deed. We've pushed for this. We've gotten them to do a survey. The last word on that, and several months ago, was that, oh, the survey's caught up in some legal questions. Now, being somebody who does surveys myself, I'm not sure what legal questions take three months to answer. But we are working on that. We're trying to get this this conservation easement actually put into the land records and documented. So that it doesn't act, it's, it's the whole trap, Trap Rock Ridge area. It's roughly eighteen acres of the parcel.
Right.
It has not been forgotten by us.
Well, the state has been pretty reasonable. They've granted pieces here and there, so.
We want all that. And then we want money to abate it.
We should concentrate on buying the both parcel, too.
Well, that too. That's a big dollar item as well.
I'm sure that'll be something that'll come up for discussion as well. But
Is that for sale?
It is not currently on the market.
Don't you think so?
And they are still using the quarry too, by the way.
Right. Yeah.
In fact, they come before planning and zoning again for their biannual review.
But I'm not talking about the quarry part of it.
Yeah, talk about the southern parcel. Yeah. It'd be nice to add that to our pieces on the trail system there.
And that's all we have for tonight.
Thank you. Moving on to item C, pond life, research and education. Ellen, I believe this is your item?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. So I don't have anything currently regarding a pond or research, except I do commend the Chris and crew for getting on board, especially late in the season, taking on this large project to make a much better road path and humidation way for the public and cars and everything else smooth coming. I'm looking forward to that. So thanks again, Chris, for taking on this project and also for attending these meetings on top of what you're doing. I really commend that. It's, it's a lot to learn, and you can't learn everything overnight, and I don't know everything and never will. And as things fall sometimes through the cracks, small things don't matter as much as the big picture. I know that's what you're working on, so that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Next item is adjournment, motion to adjourn.
Some of.
Motion from Commissioner Womet. Second. Bishant, all in favor? Okay. Passed unanimously.